Good evening. I would like to call to order the September eleventh, twenty twenty-three Academic Achievement Committee Meeting of School Year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. I am Dr. Zippor Miller, Chair of the Committee and the District Five Representative, Representative of the Prince George's County Board of Education. And my Vice Chair is Ms. Pamela Boozer Struthers, District Three Representative of the Prince George's County Board of Education. If everyone could please introduce themselves, starting with the Vice Chair and then the other committee members, then the Prince George's County Public Schools Administrative Staff and then the Board's Office Staff.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Pamela Boozer Struthers, the Vice Chair of the Committee and the District Three Board of Education Member.
Buenas tardes.
Good evening, everybody.
I'm Madeline LaSalle Fraser. I am Madeline LaSalle Fraser. I am District Eight Representative. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Brandon Jackson. I am the school board member for District Six.
Hello, I'm Judith White, Chief Academic Officer. Good evening.
Good evening, Kian McDaniel, Director of Curriculum and Instruction.
Good evening, Michelle Dyson, Middle School Mathematics Supervisor.
Good evening, Garnetta Turner, Middle School, I'm sorry, High School Instructional Specialist.
Good evening, I'm Janita Nelson Generec, Elementary Mathematics Supervisor.
Good evening, my name is Rosa Lopez and Board Office Administrative Secretary.
Good evening, Board Chair. Did you want to introduce yourself? You're joining us as a guest and we always love to have you.
Thank you so much. Judy McInnes Murray, Chair of the Board Ex officio Member. And I couldn't see me on again, but I see me now. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I am so excited to start this academic year. And Ms. Lopez, could you please call the roll?
Dr. Zippor Miller.
Present.
Ms. Boozer Struthers.
Present.
Mr. Jackson.
Here.
Mrs. LaSalle Fraser.
Present.
Mr. Murray. Mrs. McInnes Murray.
Present, non-voting. Thank you.
That's correct.
So, we have a quorum, so I will just begin the meeting. Since this is our first meeting of the academic year, I'd like to begin with just giving us a reminder of our charge. The Academic Achievement Committee's purpose is to oversee on behalf of the Board of Education, the development and implementation of school systems' academic programs, operations involving student affairs, and initiatives designed to ensure effective and timely parent and community engagement with the school system. We will meet virtually once a month on Mondays at five thirty P M. The meeting dates are posted on Board Docs and the topic for each month will be posted on Board Docs prior to the meeting date. Additionally, I'd like to take the opportunity to inform everyone that the committee, in collaboration with our Chief Academic Officer, Dr. Judith White, have created a work plan for the upcoming year. I would like to take a few minutes just to go over a few highlights. So today, September eleventh, we will be going over math interventions and programming, the theory behind the practice. In October, specifically October sixteenth, we'll be going over equity, diversity, and belonging, pulling back the layers, equity leads dash to action, and the theory behind practice. In November, specifically November thirteenth, we'll be going over school culture and climate, S E L, the theory behind the practice. Then in December, we'll go over data, the data that we will go over as long as it is ready is a core content pass rate for mathematics and science by race and special education. The core content pass rate for English Language Arts and Social Studies by Race and Special Education, kindergarten grade one and grade two literacy data. Then what we plan to do for the next three months is to come back to mathematics in January and take a look at it from the perspective of implementation. In February, equity, again, take a look at it from the perspective of implementation. And in March, school culture. In April, we'll go over data. And then in May, we will synthesize everything that we have learned throughout the year and discuss any next steps and recommendation. Each meeting will have a thread that focuses on middle school, ESOL, special education. Each topic will also weigh in on the relevance of the student learner profile. So as a chair, I am excited again to welcome everybody. And I would like to turn it over right now for the adoption of the September eleven, twenty twenty-three meeting agenda. May I have a motion from one of my colleagues to adopt the September eleventh meeting agenda?
Move to adopt the September eleventh meeting agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, thank you. The agenda is adopted. I'd like to have a motion to approve the June twelfth, twenty twenty-three meeting minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of June twelfth.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 The agenda is adopted. There are no registered public commented speakers this evening, so let us move on to our discussion items. So at this time, Dr. White, I will yield the floor to you and your team so that you can present this evening's agenda item.
Thank you so much and thank you for having us. I'm excited about my mathematics team coming this evening and sharing the theory behind the practice. Unlike previous years where we just come and give information overall, we really thought together collectively as we built out this year to really talk about just some innovative ways and how they're approaching the work. I would like to note that in October, we have a board work session for mathematics and my team will go into more specifics around special populations. So we didn't include that a lot of specifics tonight because we'll have a full board work session, so you'll hear more there. While they made mention in linkage to our learner profile, you will really see that in action in October. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. McDaniel and my elementary, middle, and mathematics team. And I believe Rosa, you're going to guide the presentation for them.
Good evening, everyone. As was mentioned, we are excited to just highlight some of our programming for students in mathematics, K through twelve this evening. And we're really going to, I'm excited about the opportunity to begin this conversation so you can get the overview of many of the different programs and projects that we're implementing and then to come back in the spring and share with you so you can hear more about the actual implementation. And so with that said, I'm going to turn it over to the math team.
All right, thank you for inviting us, having us here today this evening. So we want to get started with talking about interventions and programming, the theory behind the practice. And what we want to start off is to, we're going to take you on a journey of some of the interventions and programs that we have in place. But we want to start off first by helping you, well, letting you understand that when we talk about interventions, we're talking about those supports that we help, we put in place to help students become more successful mathematical learners by not only building their understanding of essential content, but as well as their motivation and confidence. Because we know as students continue to persistently struggle as they approach mathematics concepts, we, students start to have these different types of feelings. So we want to make sure that we real clear that as we build this program, we talk about the work that we're doing, that we don't just look at it through the lens of the content, but we also look at it, how do we motivate and build confidence in our students so they continue to progress in mathematics throughout their schooling? So I'm going to go, you could go to the next slide. One more time? Okay.
So we're going to start off with discussing the development of the mathematical reasoning progressions. When we talk about the Maryland College and Career Ready Standards, we know that the topics that are connected across grade levels, and that includes mathematical reasoning. So this diagram shows a really good picture of how the domains of reasoning build upon one another. And without those domains, those previous domains, we get those gaps. So it's essential that we start off with pre-K to K when we think about those counting strategies and reasoning through counting one-on-one. And when we, if you can go back, because we really want to make sure that we are clear on how students become mathematical thinkers and how they can apply their mathematical reasoning and sense-making to new situations. So it's critical that we talk about the reasoning piece. So counting strategies, pre-K to K is critical in order to build to that additive thinking. And when we think about additive thinking, they go from counting one-to-one and now become more sophisticated and making bigger groups. So now we're doing ten, ten ones make a ten, and then the reasoning through adding larger groups instead of that one-to-one correspondence that we see in pre-K and K. They lean on counting strategies, but we know we need to develop that reasoning and become more sophisticated with that additive thinking that's critical at grades one and two. As they progress, now we get to multiple, multiplicative reasoning. That's my favorite word and then I mess it up all the time. Multiplicative reasoning is essential, connects to additive thinking. And I want to say again, when we talk about multiplicative thinking, it's more than just knowing their multiplication facts. It's being able to to reason and make sense of those bigger groups. Again, we started one-to-one with those counting strategies. We make bigger jumps instead of ones. Now we're looking at groups of fives, groups of tens. When we think about multiplicative reasoning, we're making larger groups. So instead of counting and skip counting and memorizing rote-ly our multiplication facts, they can reason through, if I have five groups of ten, that's fifty, and then I'm skip counting. I'm not relying on my additive thinking. I'm becoming more sophisticated with my thinking. And then as we continue to progress, we look at grades six through seven. Multiplicative reasoning is essential to gaining that proportional reasoning. So again, increasing that sophistication with that reasoning, that sense-making, it's critical. If anything is missing, we'll see gaps. And the older children get, if we're not starting with those counting strategies, the additive thinking, that multiplicative reasoning, proportional reasoning is going to be a struggle for our students. And then we get to functional reasoning. It all depends on that foundation we started at pre-K. And I'm going to say pre-K a lot because I think we, we don't consider that as essential when we talk about that mathematical progression. So all of these domains of reasoning, they build upon one another. It increases that sophistication and it's essential. Again, it's not about just getting the right answer, but being able to think through and reason and make sense of mathematics so that students can be successful, love math, not see it as a hindrance or something that I'm not going to really do in life. I'm applying it, I'm using it, I'm building my reasoning. And this is essential for that, that sophisticated learner to become that amazing student at the end of the, not college, but before they get to college with the algebraic thinking.
Okay, so the next slide. The next slide. So as we start to think about what we know about the progressions in mathematics, it's so important that we know that data informs all instructional next steps. So here's a visual of how our assessment system. So we use formative, interim, and summative assessments to help teachers make those instructional next steps. So with those, we, students who, they begin to demonstrate their proficiency with grade level standards. And then based off of how students perform, that's how we determine what is the best tutoring or intervention support needed for that student. So when you look at formative, that is our ongoing assessments. Teachers are formatively assessing all the time. And from that assessment, that's when we put in place that just-in-time support. And if you look at the three-tier approach at the bottom, where you see the largest foundation at the bottom, where you see tier one, that's our classroom intervention. That's where you see differentiated instruction. That's when we are going to talk about what are some of those programs that we put in place for all students, but still be intentional about what each student needs. So it's through those formative, those daily assessments, that we are modifying instruction, putting those interventions in place for those particular students, ensuring that they have access to tutoring after school or sometimes tutoring during the day in those programs that we have. Then we move to our interim assessments, and those are our district assessments. And from our district assessments, we, teachers look at the data, we look at data from our particular offices that we identify. So from our tutoring program, when we look at our district data, how do we determine some of our programs, especially like our tutoring program? So when we start talking about small group interventions, that's when we target. So if we're going to do a ten-week tutoring program, we're going to ensure that it targets these standards based off of what we're seeing across the district with a targeted, a targeted group of students from our interim assessments. And then our summative assessments. That's our, and of course, when we get to the state assessment, so it all begins at the beginning of the school year. We look at what does our state assessment data tell us? And then how do we move and use that data to inform our next steps as teachers formatively assess daily? And then we look at our benchmarks. So when you get to that tier three approach, that's that individualized intense intervention. That's when we are going to look at those target students to ensure that we put them in some intervention course that's very targeted for their individual needs. So if we move to the next level, let's just take the next slide. Let's take a look at. There you go. So here, these are the models of the PGCPS tutoring and intervention strategies that we have for students. And what you, what you'll see, you'll see, I'm a connector to the tiers. So we have our tier one, tier three, tier two. So the first one is our high dosage tutoring, and that's that small group. And if you recall the slide prior, we talked about in the middle, that tier two is where we talked about the small group tutoring. And that is our high dosage tutoring that support current grade level curriculum, and that's outside of the school day. And if you look at this, multiple sessions per week is out of, outside of the regular instruction. In our small group tutoring is usually twice a week for thirty minutes with a targeted group of students. It's virtual. Students are identified based on needs, data informed, and then is delivered by our partners, our Carnegie Learning and our iReady Math Partners. So we meet with them often. We analyze data often. We look at how our students performing. And then when they, we target students in the small group, we always start with baseline data because at the end of the program, we want to make sure students are making progress. And a part of that high dose tutoring is a part of building students' self-efficacy. So a part of it is students are taking ownership and goal-setting in the small group tutoring sessions that they participate in. And we know that students are doing reflections and there's feedback for students so to help them improve in their, the targeted content that we're looking at. Then in the middle, you see evidence-based intervention, and that aligns with our tier three. And our tier three interventions are those programs that have been proven effective to some degree through outcome evaluations. So implementation matters. So when we think of evidence-based interventions and we think about that tier three, those are for our students who are significantly below grade level. Those are, a lot of times, if you look at that first bullet, we say iReady. That's our special needs students. So we have our special needs students who have interventions identified on their IEP. We ensure that we have a evidence-based program for those students to support them. So they do grade level, they scaffold up to their grade level, but it also provides them an individualized program where students look at what is my area of need, where are my, where is my gaps? Thinking about what the progressions Janita shared with you earlier, where is my gap? Is my gap in additive reasoning? Is it in the multiplicative reasoning? And if it is, it's not that I'm getting a drill kids to do multiplication facts, but it's how do I connect repeated addition to the work that students need? Then we also have our Carnegie Learning Mathia program, and then another evidence-based intervention program is Do the Math. And then when we talk about our tier one, we have on-demand and drop-in tutoring, homework help. And that's open to all our students, grades three through twelve. Regardless of the course, it's available Mondays through Thursdays and Saturdays. Students can schedule time to come in and say, hey, I need help with this particular concept. They can, they can select fifteen-minute or thirty-minute session with a tutor, and it's individualized. It's virtual. But what's important in with this on-demand and a drop-in tutoring opportunity is sometimes our kids, our parents have students join tutoring, and sometimes the kids come and say, I don't know why I'm here. But it's okay because we work with our partners and they have access to our scope and sequence. So if a student appears or comes to our on-demand or drop-in tutoring, all of the tutors have been equipped with what are the students learning at this present time. So if a student comes and say, I'm not sure why I'm here, there's some math content that's aligned to prerequisites and the current learning for that particular student. Again, it's delivered by external partners, again, Carnegie Learning and iReady Math. And as you can see, the connection, you see iReady Math. We want to make sure that our tutoring supports our special needs population. We want to make sure our tutoring also tailors and supports our elves. Okay, and with that particular work, and then our Carnegie Learning Mathia. So we really try to see, okay, when the kids come, are we making a connection to what they're learning with iReady? If they come and we know that this is a student who's in Mathia, are we providing the support with that evidence-based intervention program? So those are our three areas for math tutoring and interventions that supports our tier one, tier three, and tier two. We can go to the next slide. So let's look at one of our intervention programs. Put our next slide. There you go.
All right, so at the elementary level, we have adopted the Dreambox Math. It's an adaptive digital resource that supplements the K-five core curriculum. And the goal is to fill in gaps for students that have those gaps across those reasoning domains. And there's also opportunities for enrichment for those students that can do more and go beyond the grade level. It's the only digital math program that has an S rating of strong. And what's unique about DreamBath, DreamBath, Dreambox Math is that it develops the conceptual understanding. It's not about that answer-getting. We talked about that before. It's really focused on the reasoning and how well students make sense of the mathematics. There's just some visuals on this slide that just captures the types of activities they have. They have virtual manipulatives. And then what Dreambox does, it captures how students engage with the activities. And it's, it captures their thinking and reasoning. And then based on the data that's collected, a unique pathway is created for students. And then they're able to have adaptive activities based on where they are. It meets them where they are. And this year, the Dreambox Math has implemented the Launchpad Baseline Assessment that places students in the Dreambox curriculum to begin. And then once that baseline assess, that baseline assessment is complete, there's an initial standing level, and then growth reports are created. And actually, the growth reports come out weekly. And you can see how the students move based on how they're engaging in the lessons. The curriculum, our K-five core curriculum, provides guidance on when to implement and have students engage in in Dreambox. So we have an entry task, that formative assessment data that assesses those prerequisite skills. And then the teachers can assign those prerequisite standards that they find that there are some gaps in that reasoning. And then students are able to engage in activities that connect to that unit of instruction to help fill in those gaps. And then we also provide guidance on what we call purposeful pause days, which is another word for the data-informed instruction. You've collected formative, you've collected formative assessment data through the lessons. And now based on what I've seen, I know I have some students that need some additional practice with additive thinking, for example, or multiplicative reasoning. So the purposeful pause days, there's guidance on which standards to assign, either prerequisite standards or those on-grade level standards that align to each of the units of instruction. And then in our classroom, this is a resource that can be done in learning stations. They can also be done in flexible small group instruction with the teacher. They can be assigned independent practice, and there's some parent connections. We have a lot of resources that show parents how best to support students as they work within Dreambox. And then we have technology centers. The good thing is we have those one-to-one devices. So in school, there's opportunities for students to engage in Dreambox, particularly for those students that may have some gaps, to fill in those gaps, and so that they have that access to grade-level content. That's our elementary tier one resource. We can go on to the next slide.
Good evening. So in high school, we have a specific course called Algebra One Lab. And Algebra One Lab, as it states, is a gateway course for students who are enrolled in Algebra One. The goal is for students who are concurrently enrolled in Algebra One to receive individualized instruction in Algebra One Lab. The goal of the course is for students who are, who, from eighth grade, typically their middle school experience that, you know, I don't like to use the word struggle, but they didn't fare well or they got struggled in mathematics. So we wanted to address those students as they entered Algebra One ninth grade. It's typically not a remedial course, so we're not teaching second grade content. They're not teaching third grade content. They focus on the content and the prerequisite skills that students need to be successful in Algebra One. We know Algebra One is a high school mathematics graduation requirement. Also, Algebra One MCAP, this assessment is tied to the course. So we wanted to provide them with a course that not only beats up their prerequisite skills, but it will have them successful in Algebra One. Now, the Algebra One Lab teachers and the Algebra One teachers, the goal is for them to collaborate. They are to collaborate with each other in order to meet the needs of the students. So the course is breaking and broken into two parts. It's a sixty-forty model where forty percent is technology instruction on the program Mathia. Mathia is a one-to-one tutor. It provides individualized support for students. It addresses students' needs or where they are and where they need to go. In addition, this remaining sixty percent, that's the in-class instruction. So not only is it technology-based, but they also have an alignment with one, the Mathia book, where teachers know the prerequisite skills that they need for the upcoming Algebra One lesson, so they prepare them for that. But also aligned to our Algebra One curriculum. And so when teachers know exactly what they need to be successful in Algebra One, Lab is the course that students go into to prepare them for that content. Now, the model, just like any classroom model, but we really emphasize multiple models for lab. Flexible grouping, learning centers, independent study, technology study. Lab is also important in high school. We, as in middle school, we have what's called data-driven practice days. So on these days, in collaboration with the Algebra One teachers, they prepare students using the data from Mathia. Okay, what is student A struggling in? Okay, what can, what grouping can we put students A or students B into? And so we really emphasize the three-group rotation within the lab class as well as we do in the Algebra One class. Stated earlier, is encourages students to be individualized. We encourage that blending learning model because although we are a one-to-one district, just putting kids on technology, whether you're a multilingual learner, general ed, special ed, we know that that's not typically what's we know that that's not typically um what students need the entire course time. So they do need that one-on-one instruction. They do need that face-to-face with the teacher. And so um that is the benefit of having Algebra One Lab as a ninth grade course. All right, so now we've talked about um tutoring programs. We've talked about a few about interventions, but we know that all um work goes back, stems back to what's happening in that classroom. So we wanted to share one of our uh MSDE partnerships, one of the programs that we are engaged in. And we're pretty excited about this work. Um it's a partnership with MSDE and it's around math lesson study. And the lesson study cycle is is much more than just one polished lesson, but it's really building a professional learning community of teachers where they come together and they deepen their knowledge of content. They really focus on student thinking and their commitment to the work to improve instruction. So when we talk about how do we ensure that we're bridging gaps? And then we talk about how do we ensure that we are accelerating learning? It starts with teachers planning. It starts about, it starts with teachers talking about the mathematics, talking about the best instructional uh strategies and practices. And not just talking about them, planning them, going in the classroom, implementing them, coming back, looking at student work, and then coming with the next step. How do we continue to improve our practice so that we um know how to do those um just-in-time supports? Uh we make sure that we're building uh instructional lessons that are engaging for our students. So this partnership, as you see in the visual, um it is the lesson study cycle. It is student-centered um around student learning. It improves teacher effectiveness. It is data-driven and research-based. It prioritizes diversity, equity, and inclusion for all students. That's a very key, important piece around this work is that we're really looking at how are we tapping in to ensure that we are addressing all of our learners in this particular work? Um the two schools that we are starting this partnership with is Kettering Middle School and Benjamin Tasker Middle School. And with um this work, it's going to target around a collaborative team, which includes our math teachers, um special educators, our English language learner teachers, math content specialist, coach, and administrators in this particular work. And over the school year, the goal is to get through two lesson study cycles. Um it's during the day and after-school participation. And when you see during the day, it aligns perfectly. If you look at this visual, it's the work we've been doing here in Prince George's County. So when this partnership was brought to us, we was thinking, hey, this aligns with the work we've been doing in the county around our collaborative planning cycle. So if you see this visual, where you see the cycle where it's common planning, common tasks, common assessment, um looking at students' work and professional development around that piece, study groups. And the goal is, we starting, we're starting with two schools, Kettering Middle School and Benjamin Tasker Middle School. But the goal is to expand this lesson study protocol to um include additional schools in this particular work. So we know that um in to ensure that we have a solid intervention program and a solid um programs that we are implementing and providing to students uh and families is that we have to make sure that we are really being intentional about our work, our daily work in the classroom um with all of our teachers who are touching um students. So this is our MSD uh E partnership, and you'll learn more about it when we come back. Um I believe in October and um later on in May, I believe. So there you see the different stages and we're excited and we started um the planning process as uh we'll begin tomorrow with these two schools. Next slide. So this is pretty much a conclusion of our presentation. We just wanted to give you a a a peek into how we are addressing our students and their learning gaps and uh making sure that we are accelerating learners. But not only we're students who are um have gaps, but we also have things in place where we are being um intentional and focused um on on addressing all of our learners through tutoring and through intervention programs and then just through some partnerships that we have with MSDE and other um vendors. So this concludes the presentation and we are open for any questions that you may have.
Good evening. Oh, I am so excited to hear about the interventions that you have. I have questions. However, I need to yield to my colleagues. It's hard to be the chair because you can't ask the questions first, right? So I need to yield to my colleagues um and open up the floor for any questions. So for the first round, we'll do five minutes and then for round two, we'll do three minutes. So you can just use your um hand raise and then we'll just go from there. Board Member Jackson can go ahead.
So, good afternoon, everybody. First, I want to say thank you um for the lovely presentation. It gave us some really great insight um on a lot of the great work you guys are doing. Um and I applaud you and all of your efforts and um helping us uh mitigate this gap in uh mathematics specifically. Um one of the questions that I had was, um and I think you guys touched on it a little bit about um uh the cultural um um competency aspect. And I just wanted to know like how um like culturally relevant or culturally sensitive um are the um equations or the the problems that the kids um or students, shall I say, um are receiving? I know sometimes there can be a disconnect between um, you know, understanding the the word problem per se and then not being able to relate. Um so is there like an effort to um make sure that the the problems and the material is um like, I guess, uh culturally inclusive? Um and i- if there is, I would just like to know, um, you know, if there is. Thank you.
Um I guess I'll get started. Um in mathematics, relevance, relevance um is critical in mathematics. So we want to make sure that we always are providing students with um uh word problems or problem-based learning that's relevant to their particular learning. And through our training with teachers, we may start, for example, we always bring up this one when we had a task, a football task in middle school. And when the teachers, one of the teachers came back and said, I I implemented that, but I had to stop and I had to make a connection to my student population. Because football is not football throwing the pigskin, throwing the football. It was around soccer. So we had to stop, make a connection with the academic language um for students, not water the mathematics content down, but just making it relevant and get making sure our student had access to understanding what that problem was asking them to do so that that students could enter into that particular work. So relevance is very important for um the work that we do in mathematics um around the tasks that we put before students. We put strategies in place for students um when they uh entering into a problem-solving situation. Do we have a problem-solving paradigm? So our students know how to unlock those particular problems. Our teachers are trained on those problem-solving strategies, relevance. Teachers are no uh trained on how to modify tasks. So if there's a a missing piece that we then can make a connection to the students that are sitting in your classroom. Oh, I'm sorry. I hope uh Janita or Garnet, if you wanted to add anything.
No, I was I was just going to add that. And also, in the beginning of the year, we implement the first five in which we promote teachers learning about their students. So when it is time to make modification to the curriculum, that they know exactly what students they have in front of them, what are their likes, what are their dislikes, what culture, you know, that if it's culturally relevant to their students. Because we can make a great curriculum and it doesn't address anyone in my class. So the importance of doing that first five is getting to know your students, getting to know their back background, building relationships, having a relationship with your student. And then say, okay, well, I know that Garnetta likes tap dancing or Garnetta likes swimming. How can I make that relevant to her?
I want to say. I'm sorry. Really quickly, we also wanted to, I wa- I also wanted to share how we partner with the our multilingual learner. Actually, the English Language Development Office, they changed names. I gotta make sure I get it right. And making sure that we develop the vocabulary, provide that um background knowledge and do that front, front-loading so that students can connect and and see the mathematics and then really make sure that it's not the language that's causing a barrier, but they connect to the math and that that they that they see themselves. And then with our student-centered approach for instruction, it's not teacher talk, but it's students relying on their thinking and what they know and applying how they think and how they reason mathematically to those new situations. So it's several different ways to make math accessible to all students and make it relevant. And so I just wanted to share that piece, and I know time was up a long time ago, but just wanted to add that.
Well, Dr. Dr. Miller, can I uh proceed with my follow-up question? Or I mean, is the part, is the same thing?
Okay, I I don't see any other hi- hands. Are there any other hands right now? I just want to make sure. Go ahead, um Board Member Jackson.
Yeah, thank you. I I definitely uh think that's amazing to be able to, you know, uh make modifications um, you know, as as we go. Um because I was thinking like I I focused when I was in college in high, like I focused on like a heavy STEM area. Um and I wasn't able to do that until I was able to see myself inside of the problem. So I, that's why the question I asked is, is like, because having that cultural relevance is so key. So my question, I guess my follow-up question is, is that not only are you guys able to like ma- make modifications, um uh being proactive, but as far as like the reactive piece, like um at the end of the year, is there like a review process or audit process to check the material um to see um is it um still applicable? And um, you know, um can we make those connections with those different demographics or segments um of our of our student body?
So every summer, we do go and we make revisions to the curriculum. Throughout the school year, we do surveys to get feedback back from the teachers. We're gonna start um implementing more um parent involvement so that we can get feedback from parents. So there's always opportunities for us to go back into the curriculum and make those revisions based on the information we get from all of our stakeholders.
And I I do want to add that we definitely not only hear back from teachers and and around the curriculum. I do have a story when I went into a classroom. And in algebra, we always did the cell phone plan, the cell phone plan. And then I walked into a classroom and just talking to a student. The student said, this is stupid because there's, we don't even pay for minutes anymore. And I was like, huh, I ran back and like, okay, we're going to change the curriculum because this is, this doesn't even make sense. Like kid, it's like we're asking them to use the ro- the the phone. Like it it doesn't apply to them anymore. And so that's just an example of how, just in the moment, that we do, we do make changes and make it relevant for our students.
Thank you. Board Member David Murray.
Hi, good evening. Um thank you for the presentation and the the topic, um Madam Chair. Uh uh first question was around Carnegie. Um it sounds like we've had that in the district for a while. Um is there a reason that there wasn't, I don't, I don't think I've ever seen any data around it um shared with the board?
We do have data we collect monthly. And we meet with um Dr. Libby and her team.
Yeah, that's part of our ESSR collection um process. And so that data is submitted um each uh quarter, actually, um through the app, due to the ESSR funds that we use to purchase the product. So that is available. I believe it's on our website.
And I I do, I did share, I apologize, Dr. McDaniel. I did share Board Member Murray um a report around ESSR where we had to pull out, I think, like ten of our um tutoring programs or interventions and that we would provide that report back to MSDE in the way that they wanted. So we can send that again. I can send that up again just so you can see it. That would have been, I want to say, Dr. McDaniel, we submitted that, it was either last year. Um but we do, we do, actually Carnegie is actually one of our best ways they provide us data. They, for our team, they provide real-time data, like how many students showed up this week? Because we have two different platforms for Carnegie, um on-demand and students who go through like a certain weeks of um professional development. But I will reforward that other document back up so that you have an opportunity to look through it.
Thank you. That that would be helpful. And I'm I'm into the video as well. But just like looking at this presentation, I can't tell if they're doing good, bad, or other work in terms of how they're moving our students. So um that would be really helpful. And um moving on to to Dreambox, I understand, you know, they have some studies um on the What Works Clearinghouse, and I'm looking, looking at um one of them. And I guess I'm kind of curious around what the district saw or has seen with that program. Like from what I'm looking at, it looks like one average students in the study that they, you know, from the evidence that you all cited, moved four percentile points. So, you know, they were at the fifteenth percentile on average. They went into the nineteenth, which, you know, it's not nothing, but it is kind of small and students, you know, spend somewhat significant periods of time on it, certainly when you add up the time through the school year. So we'd love to kind of hear how we're thinking about like why we have Dreambox and yeah, basically what what we see there.
So I can share that we did a correlation study prior, actually during the pandemic. So at that time, MCAP wasn't there, so we are going to now do a correlation study with MCAP now that we've taken that two years. So we'll have additional information on the success. But with the correlation study we did prior, we looked at second grade and how it related to um the grades they earned on their report card. And there was a strong correlation. When they used Dreambox at the recommended time, it correlated with the the students that were making As and Bs in mathematics.
Okay, and um do we know kind of relatively how long, roughly how long we've had Dreambox?
This is the fourth year.
Okay.
But I would also say it's the, while it's the fourth year, the very first year, remember when we had Bridge to Excellent Schools, Board Member Murray? And so at one point in time, we were only using it for a pool of schools. Then the pandemic hit, and so now we're at a place where we're building in interventions within our um school day. So I think while we've had it, we've evolved each year in implementing it in a in a slightly different way. So I just wanted to add that context as well.
Okay, um that's helpful. And yeah, as we get more data on that, I would love to see it because, you know, if if the randomized study only found it gives four points, to me, that says if we do everything right, we're we're going to get the same four points. That we're not going to get, you know, some massive swing. And I know, you know, these programs aren't free and, you know, they add up. Um we have them in all, you know, in in pretty much every single one of our schools. So I appreciate it.
Sure, no problem.
And just a note, Dreambox is just a small portion of the instructional time that students spend in mathematics at the elementary school level. And so while it's a portion of um what they're doing, it is not majority of what they're doing. And so we're getting our increases and our points based on the pedagogy that our teachers are using and the implementation of our curriculum.
Yeah, and I think back when when we first went Dreambox, I want to say, Janita, and you mentioned this, you talked about the ESSR rating. Back when we first had to do interventions based on MSDE, we had to pick certain things that were certain ratings, and it was the strongest rating at that moment in time. We've just gotten to full implementation. We, like you, feel the exact same way. We're at a place, especially with ESSR funds ending that, we want to make sure that those things that we continue to purchase are the things that are making a difference. So um it's it's all of all of our interventions and enrichments. We'll be really taking a close look at the data to determine what we need to continue on in school year twenty-four, twenty-five.
Board Member David Murray, was it? Okay, thank you. All right, um. Board Chair Judy Mackens-Murray.
Uh thank you, Madam Chair, but I'll defer to uh the member who's voting that uh Boozer Struthers, and I'll come back if you don't mind.
Oh, no, I don't mind at all. Thank you. And I apologize, Vice Chair Pamela Boozer-Struther, so.
Oh, no, that that's all right. Thank you, uh Chair Mackens-Murray. Appreciate it. Um thank you, Dr. Miller. I what I had a, I actually received a specific question today about a program that I haven't heard about uh that was used last year. a program that I haven't heard about uh that was used last year called Go School Box. Is that still in use? Or is that specific to a school?
Go School Box is the platform that we use for tutoring. So when, when parents and students would go to the clever platform, go to clever, they will log on to Go School Box. That's how they access their, you know.
And that's, that's in use for elementary again this year?
Elementary, middle, and high.
Okay. All right. I see. So there's, I, I think I've seen multiple names then. It was the first time I've seen a reference to that. Um, so the, the other question I have is um certainly relevant to middle school and eighth graders. Right now, the um, you know, uh, students and their parents are beginning to receive information about PSAT and opportunities for the science and tech programs. And as you could imagine, many of these students who were uh showing uh promising, uh, you know, their academics in math were strong prior to um, you know, this, those disruptive years. And right now, that would be fifth grade uh was the most disrupted year. How, wha- what is your advice to students and parents right now if they are, that they clearly are just, aren't, their student is just not on pace to PSAT for the science and tech programs? I think there's concern about um the impact of the diversity in which, you know, the schools and um, who will, you know, how to, who will be accepted into these programs? I don't know if you have any data from this year, because I know that cohort certainly was impacted as well. Um, but I know that's certainly on the minds of eighth-grade parents right now.
A- a- and thank you for that question, um, question. One of the things we've really been pushing is that we don't wait to eighth grade to start PSAT eight-nine practice. Inside of our curriculum, we start introducing students and parents to PSAT eight-nine in grade six. So we, if you look into our curriculum, we have a portion where we introduce students to the different formats um for PSATs, uh test-taking strategies. And then we also offer during the summer, we offer bridge programs to get students prepared for PSAT eight-nine. And starting this Saturday, this Saturday, we have our five Saturdays, PSAT eight-nine um courses where s- uh students, what, they really take advantage of that particular tutoring, a small group session where parents um can have their students engage in some test-taking strategy for PSAT eight-nine. And as we're working, we really target all of our schools as we're going around traveling. And it's back to school night, we say, hey, share this with parents um about this particular tutoring. But we don't just start now. We don't want to just have this conversation with parents. Eighth grade, we want to start having this conversation with our parents early on. And so the way, if you look at, when we look at the alignment to PSAT eight-nine, it aligns very closely to the instruction that's happening in the classroom. So the piece that we do uh for um PSAT eight-nine is the test-taking strategies. So how do I look at these particular problems, the types of questions that they're going to ask? And how do we attack those particular questions where we may have a grid in? We don't do grid-ins on our assessments for MCAP. But for PSAT eight-nine, there's a grid in. So we start get, teaching the students how to do those grid-ins early on in sixth grade. So the workaround is could, as, as you're working with your parents, continue to encourage them to in um uh have their students sign up for our small group tutoring. Sign up for our tutoring sessions that we have, because we don't want, like, again, we don't want to just start at eighth grade. We want to start having these conversations early on so that as we putting these interventions in place and these tutors and tutoring uh programs in place, that we are addressing them, all of our students, so that we all have equitable opportunities to do well on PSAT eight-nine. And remember, PSAT eight-nine, it's only one uh uh criteria that's used for identifying those students who may um go on to uh those specialty programs. Mm-hmm. But I, but we can use your help as well as you're talking to your constituents, is to get it out, the tutoring. We want more students, especially, um, you know, as students start to progress uh or matric- matriculate towards high school, you, that they start to dwindle. So we need more parents. We need to encourage more of our parents to get our seventh and eighth grade students really taking advantage of these opportunities.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And just to add on, if you can also encourage your parents to sign up for the free SAT tutoring as well. So we provide free SAT tutoring in addition to the PSAT, the small. So one of the small groups is SAT for our high school students.
And I want to say, Edrika also on the website for the summer also has a Khan Academy, starting in sixth grade, where students can get on, build a profile. They can have it, send them like one or two questions in reading of math every single day or four questions, whatever they want, which also gets them working through um that problem solving. And, and Michelle is right. We also look at our seventh grade, um, a lot of parents wait till eighth grade, but we look at seventh grade core content, four quarters, reading, math, science, and social studies. And the first uh quarter grades, reading, math, science, and social studies of eighth grade. All of that makes up one half of that score as well.
Board Member Boozer-Struther, do you have some more questions?
I, I do not. Thanks.
Right. Board Chair Judy Mackens-Murray.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, my questions may need to wait for you guys when you give us the work session in October. Because I'm, I'm, I'm trying to learn some things and I'm trying to learn where the floor is for our students that need the tutoring. So I'm asking for the virtual, the students that are taking the virtual uh tutoring, how many? And I don't need it by school, but I do need it by middle, high, and elementary, if you don't mind. And then for the um, pull out the students that are getting the in-person tutoring. I would like the same thing, please, by elementary, middle, and high. And then I'd like to know how you measure the effectiveness of your various tutoring programs per these groups. And then if we have to, and I know you guys probably have somewhere, I haven't seen it. And maybe uh Ms. Boozer-Struther can help me because she can find everything. But I'm looking for the schools that are underperforming in math, uh elementary, middle, and high. Those are the, that's the data I need uh to, to help me to understand the floor. And then it will help me to measure how successful our programs are as we move through the year. I appreciate it. And I do appreciate this presentation tonight.
And the other thing I would say about the tutoring programs, we'll be able to provide um those that we do systemically. Know that uh what we may provide you may not be all-encompassing because our schools may also have the opportunity through other resources and funds. So I just want to just frame that picture that we're, we're going to bring what, the pieces that we contribute to.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
No problem.
Any other questions? All right, maybe I can ask my questions. Most of them were asked already. Um, the first one has to do with Algebra One Lab. And I'm just going to say, I was very, very um impressed by the amount of uh resources that we have for our students. And then um the team breaking it down in terms of that uh flow of mathematical reasoning, where they start and where they should reach by the time they get to um twelfth grade. It's really good to be able to see that. And then gives, I guess, us a better understanding of, I think some, uh, one of you mentioned that many times you can see a gap when they get to middle school um in proportional reasoning, which may have been something that happened in three to five or, or one to two. So I'm going to actually grade nine first. You have Algebra One Lab. Do you offer still Algebra One in the ninth grade or what, has that moved to the eighth grade? And then the lab is those who just haven't taken it in the ninth grade?
So, right, Algebra One is a ninth, typically a ninth-grade course. We do have middle school students enrolled in Algebra One if they're on that accelerated path. The Algebra One Lab is for students in ninth grade who, they, there may be gaps or, you know. So there's a criteria. There is a, we, they just don't put anyone in lab. There's a criteria for students. That's what you were missing. There's a criteria for students to be placed in labs. It's based off assessment data, um, the MCAP data and our benchmark data, com assessment data. It's based off the student's work habits, it's based off the student's grade, um, teacher's recommendation. So there is, there is a criteria on who goes into Algebra One Lab. So to me, okay.
No, it's, I, I was, no, no, go ahead and finish, but I was.
I was going to say, so to me, a student who took um, who's advanced or a, a, a student who took Algebra One, there, we don't have that lab course in middle school for that student. It, it's just for high school student. Because we are trying to, if they had gaps and if they did not get the progression, or if they may had a year of no teacher, you know, not to the fault of the student. And, you know, we do have students who have that gap. So we did try to put uh something in place for those students.
Makes sense. Okay, that makes sense. So that, the next question has to do with um the tutoring. And I was going through, as uh you talked about the virtual tutoring. And um that was the small group tutoring. Is this the one that's available to all students? Pretty much all grade levels that any student can sign up for and take it after school? Is that what it is?
Mm-hmm. Yes, we have it, but it's, it's different um type. So you have on-demand. You know, where uh students can, uh, parents and students can schedule tutoring. And then we have um, you're just, ju- just in time. I have, oh my gosh, I'm at homework. I'm stuck, I'm stuck. I can jump on for tutoring support there where I don't have to schedule time. And then we have our targeted tutoring around our small group um tutoring as well. So and usually our small group tutoring, it's, it's over an eight to 10-week period where we actually uh use, um, identify what's the target content we're looking for, I'm looking at, based off the data. And then students take a baseline, then they go to their tutoring. And then we get at the end, how did our students perform um as a result of attending this tutoring session?
So I think what I was asking that, because I want to ensure that as we, you know, I'm talking to our constituents and going from school to school, I want to ensure that I'm giving them accurate information as to what would work. Well, I can't diagnose what will work best for them, but what is available for them? That way they're able to decipher what works for them. And so I have this, I don't want to ask Dr. White for your team to make one more thing. So I have this, what, I don't, you can't see it, right? So this is the document that you gave us at um the bo- the first board meeting. It's like yellow and blue and it has Quick Access Guide to Academic Success.
Yep. You can get to their tutoring from that doc, that one, that QR code that has tutoring. When you go to tutoring, it'll break it out. Key, correct me, it'll break it out, what tutoring programs that we have for reading, tutoring programs that we have for math, it'll break it out, elementary, middle, and high school. Um, and then the process to um enroll. That's one of the reasons why I wanted you all to have that. Because when you think about where we are, and I'll use middle school with our middle school data. And, and Carnegie is one of the top-notch tutoring programs you can even have. And we send out flyers, we, we give stuff to the schools. And it is hard to get that middle school student in tutoring. So that's why if you are also our advocates to say, hey, we have programs every time you come in contact with parents who don't know, it'll help us out.
Okay, okay. That is it for me. Any more questions? All right. I don't see any more questions. I, I don't know whether my wake time is good, but I tried to wait to make sure that if you had any more questions, you had, I will say this, I am excited to hear more about the MSDE partnerships and the professional learning communities that you're working with at Tasker and Kettering, which you said is starting next week?
Yeah, we thought they committed and uh MSDE is coming out tomorrow to one school so we can start the planning process. And then Benjamin Tasker is next week to start the planning process. So we're excited about the partnership.
Yeah, I'm really excited to hear more about that because it looks like it'll be very um meaningful to our teachers as we get them, particularly in the middle school, to strengthen their confidence in teaching math, their content knowledge in teaching math, understanding what to look for. Because I saw in the cycle that they're also going to be looking at student work, using the data to plan. So that would be great. So I can't wait to see what comes up with that. So that said, um, if we have no more questions, uh colleagues, any follow-up items from the June 12th meeting would be in board docs. Um, I really would like to thank Dr. White and your team from Curriculum and Instruction for bringing forth such a meaningful and such a uh wealth of knowledge for us to understand the interventions that you have for our students K through 12 in mathematics. So I thank your staff, board office. I thank you for all the logistical um help that you give us to get these meetings started. And to my colleagues, thank you for joining us in this journey as we look at what we have to offer to our students and how we can ensure that our constituents are familiar with what is available and the resources that are available to them. So with that said, I want to thank everybody for a great meeting and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Uh, I make a motion to adjourn the September 11th meeting of the Academic Achievement Committee.
Second.
Thank you so much. There is a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. So it is now six thirty-six and we are adjourned. And thank you. Have a great evening and see you next month.
Thank you everyone. Thank you.